I live in Oak Park. Oak Park put in the 64 gallon cart for recycling and the recycling went up 20% the first year and then the next year it was like 17 and a half percent above, you know, the starting point. There have been towns in DuPage County that have increased the recycling by 40% when they went to these carts. I'm not sure that this is going to happen because as I explained, all the recycling is down. Our average recycling, division wide, we've got about 22 contracts, was down 7.8% last year. So it may be just arresting a decline, but we know we're going to get a lot more recycling. And I've got, you know, just looking at the percentages, I feel like there's a lot of material that's getting thrown in the trash that can be recycled. And in a way, the garbage carts have a negative impact on recycling because they have a big capacity and they're so convenient. So a lot of times people will say, "I've got room in my garbage cart. I'm just gonna..." Garbage carts, easy to get down to the street. You could just roll it down. I don't want to lug the bin down there anymore. And so sometimes where you see garbage carts or universal garbage carts, the recycling actually diminishes.
Okay. I understand your point. My whole lead on that is with this new garbage truck that we're going, pretty much with our contract, the way it's going to pay out is we're going to end up buying new garbage trucks, basically come close to it.
We're going to have to.
Right.
I mean, the only way we're going to be able to get where we need to be to afford to put the equipment in is to...
I totally understand that, but I'm saying is, we doing this contract with you now, if another town is up, are you proposing almost the same contract with these new trucks too? Or are we just, in the long run, buying these trucks because we as a pilot? I'm going to call it a pilot program, to tell you the truth.
Our company has done it elsewhere, so it's very tried and true.
With these trucks?
Yes.
Okay.
There's a lot of factors.
That's fine. I have two more follow-up questions and I'll do them. Are you willing to... Probably not. Are you willing to take out the fuel charge out of this contract?
Any contract renewal we've done in the last three years has had some sort of fuel clause in it.
And could you tell me what towns that may have been?
Well, the most recent one is Oak Brook, Riverside. I'd say I've got that clause in 15 contracts.
The other thing is the $5,000 portable, for our portable toilets and all that for our sponsors. Didn't you provide that before?
We provided in-kind services and we sold off our portable toilet services division.
To someone else?
Yes, sir.
I want to make a motion to approve the draft of the proposed contract as presented tonight. I'm going for a second and then I'll call the question. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. And the question? Alderman, please.
Are there two different colors for the toters, I take it? I would hope.
The recycling toter is going to have a different sort of top. It's going to be gray and there's going to be an embossed color graphic in it that explains what can and can't be recycled. So that's how we're going to distinguish between the...
Just the top of the can?
Yeah, it works.
Another question.
Sure.
So if we didn't want to go with this plan and you guys don't have to buy these new trucks, would the rate of increase be less then?
I'm not certain. This is, you know, what we kind of ran the numbers on.
If you didn't want to go with this, said it's a deal breaker, go back to the table. We'd go back to the table and start over. And I don't know whether that number would be higher or lower. It'd be subject to negotiation.
Alderman Kedala.
Maybe a little late now. Probably should have thought to ask this a month or two ago, but it would have been nice to see the two options in front of us. More of a status quo and then this, you know, than this program, so...
Well, I will add though, the city manager, Mr. Dowthwaite, it's my understanding he talked with each of us to get our input. And so that was early on and, you know, now we're at this stage, so maybe you did have to...
Well, yeah, well, I'm not saying anything different tonight than I did when I had my meeting with Mr. Dowthwaite, so that's why.
Okay.
Not a reflection necessarily of Mr. Dowthwaite or our, or Mr., is it Vandermolen? I've just, you know, I feel the same way I did and no one's convinced me otherwise, so...
So you didn't want this program?
No. Well, I did, there were things I didn't like about it.
This whole discussion is a little bit like Congress negotiating a healthcare plan. One alderman said, "I'm okay as long as the toters are green." And another one said, "I'm okay as long as, if I break my toter, they'll replace it." And another one said, "I'm okay as long as, if I have too much to stick in a toter, I can stick the rest out on the curb and they'll still pick it up." And so, you know, it's not like getting ducks in a row. It was sort of like putting cats in a box. And what I did was try to, when I met with each of you, I said, "Look, I know you guys might have a little problem with this or a little problem with that or a little problem with the other thing, but overall, conceptually, you know, big picture wise, can you live with it?" And with, I think, one exception, everybody said, "Well, I've got a problem here or there or there, but they're not deal breakers and overall I can live with it." And I went back to the ally and I said, "I think we got a deal that in its totality we can live with." And, you know, had I known ahead of time that there would have been a majority that wanted option A, option B, we would have gone that route. I didn't hear that. You know, the council gave me broad direction to try and negotiate an extension and that's what we did.
Alderman, please.
You know, maybe I should have been a little clearer. I always said I never liked the fuel rates. The company I deal with, when all that stuff was going on, all these, we deal with a lot of truckers, they're all trying to give us their surcharges. They said, "Listen, we do our deals, there's no fuel surcharges and we're not going to pay any extra." I just feel like we're leaving it open. I hate open-ended contracts. I like it nice and clean. I like to know what the numbers are.
Alderman, Roy Wesley.
We keep talking about this fuel charge. I see the bill for the, for where I work and you're using this peg for fuel charge. Do you use that for just municipalities or do you use that for individual?
There's a standard formula for the individuals. For the municipalities, we've just come up with this. It's not even a formula. It's just an option to sit down. So I don't know if I answered your question.
No, you didn't.
But for the, for the individuals, there's a strict formula. The way the fuel goes up or doesn't go up with the municipalities, basically, we have to petition you. We have to show you documentation and enter into a discussion. I think there's a lot more, you've got a lot more control this way than you would under a formula.
Okay.
And I think you've got a lot more control than you might perceive.
I understand that because individual, I haven't seen that fuel charge come off yet since...
Right.
EFI's been charging, so that's why I have to ask that question.
Any other questions, comments before I call the, I guess I'm going to take her to call the roll. Okay, will the minute taker call the roll?
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Kedala?
No.
Alderman Police?
No.
Alderman Coles? Alderman Roy Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Lewitin?
Motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming out and going through this with us.
We will put this on, it won't be on next week's agenda, but the meeting of March the 18th for final ratification. That'll give Ms. Dixon an opportunity to, if there's any finalization needed, to fix it up and get it back to you.
Okay, thank you. Next item is the DuPage Water Commission water rates. And apparently the rates will be going up from the Water Commission and I'm going to ask Mr. Wilson to take us through the chart, charting out what, I'm sorry.
You may want to hold until...
They want to get the alderman back?
Okay, I'll let him return. I jumped ahead.
Sorry.
It's optional. What, are they coming?
I'm going to excuse myself on this due to the fact I might have litigation against them.
Come back.
Was there a moment?
Where's Sam?
I don't know.
Where's Alderman Lewitin?
He's lost his call.
He's gone.
Do you think he's gotten sufficient notice?
They have a legal right to be present.
That's cool.
He's talking.
Have you told him?
Yes.
Okay. So I'm calling back to order the Finance and Administration Committee meeting dated February 25, 2010. Will the minute taker please reflect that six to seven members are present? Alderman Lewitin is not present, as well as Alderman Shaki. So there is a quorum and this is the DuPage Water Commission water rate increase. And Mr. Wilson, will you take us through the grid here that you've brought before us?
Certainly. But first, just let me go through the top, the verbiage at the top there real quick. Back about two years ago, we got a notice from the DuPage Water Commission that they were going to be raising their rates 15%, 15% and 14% commiserate with what the city of Chicago was raising their rates. Since then, as I'm sure you all know, they've ran into some financial difficulties and at their meeting on the 11th of February, they voted, I believe it was five to four, to increase the rates no more than 21%.
For the next three years?
Just for this next year coming up.
Okay.
They were not too clear on the next couple of years based upon what the city of Chicago was going to do with their rates. So they didn't want to commit anything further out than a year at this point. You know, one thing to note though is that they had already informed us of a 15% rate increase, so the 21% rate increase was only a 6% increase above what they had already notified us. It wasn't an additional 21 on top of that. So if we go down to the grid and these are kind of the most common ones, there's about 10 different combinations and we couldn't put them all on here, so. Column one is what we currently have that we're charging out today and will through April 30th. The DuPage Water combined rate of $1.70, RO and M of 355, up to 525 per thousand.
What's O slash M?
Operations and maintenance.
Okay.
Column two is what it was going to go to, $1.95, 376 for Wooddale and a charge of 571. That was in the rate increase plan that you guys passed back in, I want to say, November of '08. This was the second year of that. Column four, column three is just the percentage change, just the raw math. Column four holds our rate the same, but puts the DuPage Water Commission combined rate at what they've recently informed us that it could go up to. So if you choose to pass along their additional rate increase, 584 would become the new combined rate for this coming year, beginning May 1st. I say if you so choose because currently the ordinance states 571. So unless you direct staff and the attorneys to change the ordinance to go to 584, we're going to be at 571 and we'll be subsidizing that 13 cents per thousand gallons effectively in perpetuity until you decide to absorb that back into the rate structure. So we presented column four to show what it would be if you did indeed pass that through. If you don't choose to pass it through, then column two, the first number becomes 208, the Wooddale rate goes down by 13 cents and that 571 stays the way it is. So I guess the policy call is to pass it on or subsidize the rate. One thing I would caution is that if you subsidize it this year, the rate structure next year doesn't jump up to increase that. Anything they increase the rate above what we've built in is just going to compound on that additional money. So until such time that, you know, it gets caught up or you dial back on capital or other services, you're going to be subsidizing the rate, which ironically is what DuPage Water Commission's been doing for years that got them to where they are today. So it's really a policy call whether to subsidize it short-term or to pass it on.
I really like the way you articulated that. It's really, do you subsidize or not? It's that easy of a, to articulate it that while I'd like to go into why is DuPage Water Commission in this mess and what happened, that's another discussion for another time. And if anyone wants to start that, I'd be happy to put it on the agenda, but let's just stick to, do we subsidize or not? And with that, I'll open up for any input. Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Brad, do you have the, these are only homes. Is there a different, don't we have a different rate for businesses?
The water rate is the same for everyone. The sewer rate is variable depending on if it's residential, light industrial, commercial.
But a business does, a business uses more water than a resident.
Correct.
So more or less a business is paying, going to pay the same rate?
Correct. Yeah, right now the water per thousand gallons is the same for a business as it is a resident.
And is there a reason why we did not do a business rate separate than a residential rate?
The main reason that it is that way on the sewer side of things is due to the increased strain on the system, the industrial, the commercials, they have the metals and things. I mean, there's a bunch of people behind me that can talk to this better than I can, but there's more of a strain on the system from the food service companies and the manufacturing companies than just your basic residents. And so the theory behind the sewer side of it was to help offset some of the costs for the additional filtration and, you know, chemicals and the sewer plant was to go that way. The residential, the water side, you're pumping the same, there's nothing special you have to do for the water to get it into a business relative to getting it into a house.
You don't happen to know offhand what the sewer rate is for, compared to residential to industrial?
I believe industrial is 55% above and commercial 60% above on the sewer side.
Wait, residential is 55?
No, light industrial is 55% above the residential rate and commercial is 60% above the residential rate.
And what's residential?
Can you tell us where you're going? Are you saying that you're looking at increasing the sewer versus the water or? I want to know...
Actually, I'm looking at maybe offsetting this instead of residents' rate so high that we pass on to the industrial part.
I know, but we can't keep raising things in the industrial part.
Well, I understand, but we also can't keep raising our homes that are in foreclosures and everything else. We just passed a contract for a garbage increase. I mean, how much, when are we going to draw the line? I don't want to subsidize this. I mean, I don't think we, because then we got cut down on our projects that we got to do. There's got to be another way that, there's got to be another solution. I mean, we didn't start this problem. So that's where I'm going at, okay? I think a industrial building, a big company could afford a little more than a mom and pa and a social security on a, you know, you know, but if you want to go that way, that's fine, but I just, that's where I'm going for, okay?
Is there any room in the sewer rates that there could be more equitable to look at that, to see if there's any, anything we can do there?
You mean on the water side?
Mm-hmm.
We can certainly look at it, you know, yeah, we can look at it. I mean, we can spit out a list of the top 25, 50 or 100 users to see who they are. I mean, I know just off the top who a couple of them I'd rather not say right now until I have the list in front of me. We can look and see where they break out in the strata and kind of go from there if we want to go back and take a look at that. That's something we can certainly entertain.
Okay, that's a possibility. I'd like to get some more input though. Alderman Police?
Brad, basically we had already figured the 25, 25 cents per thousand on the county raising us, basically they're adding an extra 13 cents. So basically, we're going to pass that along. What I, what I was mentioning a few weeks ago is why we should look into this rates is because we're also, the city also has 21 cents going into this. So 13, an extra, additional 13 plus the 21 is 34 cents per thousand. My question is, maybe, maybe the city doesn't take that full 21 cents. Maybe we, we drop, you know, maybe it's only a nickel. We take the 13, we have to take the 13 cents from the county and maybe we only go up 5 cents versus 21 cents. The question would be, where does that impact? Because it is an enterprise fund. I know we finally have turned it around. I think this is the first year we're actually going to be in the, in the black in this fund, right?
I'm going to tell you, so are you suggesting to subsidize the 6 cents? Because that's what it comes down to. Are we going to subsidize the 6 cents?
Well, no, I think, I think what the county's charging us, we're going to have to pass. The question is, do we, do we put in our increase as well? We might have to cut, because we're talking about raising, what was it, 20, 21 cents?
15 cents we were going to raise.
No, no.
Wait, how many cents, Brad, are we going to raise it without that increase?
The city or the county?
City.
21 cents.
21 cents and we budgeted in 15 cents.
No, that was for the county though.
15 cents was for the county.
15%.
15%, yeah, it came out to...
Which was 25 cents.
25 cents, correct.
And now the county's charging us an additional 13 cents per thousand.
Correct.
So to keep this account in the black, we'd still have to do the 13 cents. The question becomes to council is, is the council going to also raise their 21 cents? I think we should look at that and probably dial that down a little and see where the numbers bring, brings us on that enterprise fund.
Okay, so the suggestion is not to raise it by probably 6 cents?
I'm talking about...
Then it's a wash, right?
Well, no, no. The 13, basically what's going on, oh, if, oh, we have to change it. I see what you're saying, Christina. I'm sorry.
Okay, no, that's okay. Mr. Wilson?
You know, if you were to choose to subsidize it some, you know, you, like I said, the downside is that you're going to subsidize it in perpetuity until you decide to raise it accordingly. So that's the downside. You know, the other thing is, you know, if you want to, you know, dial back the five-year CIP sum and not do some of those projects?
Well, that's, that's what I'm saying. Maybe we need to look at that CIP and start it, you know, change it, not the CIP, I'm sorry. The water rate increases, we have the five, it's five years. Maybe we need to look at that. I would like to see the numbers, like you showed us last year. I think last year we almost went from a negative 200,000 to the million dollar profit in the enterprise fund and then we dialed that down. So we basically, I think we're only making about 200,000 this year overall, which needs to go to the projects, I understand, but, you know, we have to pass along the 13 cents, number one. Otherwise, we're going to be losing money again, like, like they used to do in the past. The question is, what does the city do with their share? How much more are we going to raise? Or do we keep it and we only, still only make 200,000 this coming year? We don't go up. I don't know, I don't, I don't remember exactly where we were going to end up after this maze increase for the following year.
Well, I got to believe that when we're budgeting and doing the increase that there was a reason, like it's not, you know, we're not trying to just amass money, but that there's certain things we got to do on a annual basis and make sure that we're not running a deficit.
Right, but there might be a project that maybe we can hold off for a year or two or something, something that, you know, it's something we need to look at instead of just passing all these fees along.
Right, like a budget time and it's, one of my arguments last month was, let's look at it at budget time before we, you know, do too much more on, on the rates itself. So it's reasonable to look at the budget and see what we can do there. Mr. Wilson?
Yeah, I was just going to say, you know, when we built those rates a year and a half ago, and I believe you're one of the big proponents of not going to that million dollar surplus right away to knock it back down, we built it to phase it in over three years so that the water and sewer fund could pay for all of its capital by that third year without getting a subsidy from the general, the general capital projects fund. This is the second year of that. In the CIP, there was a transfer from the general capital projects fund to water and sewer fund. So if you want to dial back, you know...
So if we based it on getting to the third year, maybe we should push it back and get it to the five-year plan or...
And then, you know, if you were to do that, to do everything, you would need an infusion from the general capital projects fund, but then you would have to look at the general one and see, okay, well, if we have to infuse X dollars in there, what do you have to take out of there or push off in there to get to that end too? So it, you know, it's, it's, I guess it's, you know, simplistic in the fact that, you know, do you want to or don't you? But depending on that answer, then there's about six or seven other moving pieces that all move together that you'd have to look at.
Right. Like I know we just approved the CIP, but there might be something in there that, a project that may have to come out.
Okay, I'd like to hear some other people and then I'm going to ask that, as we moved to budget, like I initially said. Alderman Lewitin?
Thank you, Alderman Wesley. Alderman Winger, I would just like to say that I understand Eugene Wesley's compassion for people who can't pay their water bills. Certainly, it's a problem that affects the lower stratum of the economic level, while other people can afford to pay their fair share. I don't believe though that we should increase the rates to people because of their ethnicity or their occupation. I would like instead to suggest that maybe he could share a program to pick up on the program that former city manager Frank Williams started years ago and I believe is still going on, and that is getting contributions from the Salvation Army to provide donations to the city water department, to be doled out to those people who are most in need of it and show need for support in the water pain process. Mr. Wilson, would you please tell us how much we get, do we now get from the Salvation Army and how do people get on it? And I'd ask Mr. Wesley, Alderman Wesley, if he would like to share a program to increase it.
I'm going to interrupt right there. Are you saying that you want to subsidize the 6 cents or pass it through?
I'm saying that I want to pass it through.
About any other programs, you pass it through or are you subsidizing?
No, pass through, but help those people who need subsidies individually by increasing our donations to the program to provide water to people who can't afford it by giving them just a, giving them a donation for their individual accounts. And I'd like, Mr. Wilson, just to clarify that I'm telling the truth and there is such a program.
Yes or no?
Yes, there is.
Thank you. And, and it, and I will put that on another agenda if you want to put some thoughts together and then we can talk about it and put it on the agenda, because I do agree that the needy need a way to pay their bills, especially water and electric gasoline or their gas bill as well. Is that sufficient?
Yeah, it's very sufficient. The point is that the enterprise fund should not be a political football to help some people, hurt some people, kiss some people, smack some people. It should be fair, honest and the same for everybody. For those who need help, let us do it the old-fashioned way and gather funds to dole out among the most needy.
Okay, thank you. Alderman, Roy Wesley, did you wish to have any input? Okay.
Brad, how much?
out among the most needy.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Roy Wesley, did you wish to have any? Okay.
Brad, how much, I see the percentages here. Give me the money, show me the, how much is dollar amounts is it roughly, through the pass-through? I got percentages. No, I'm talking.
Yeah, I believe.
You understand my question?
I do, yeah. Depending.
On average.
I say, on, on average, based upon the way that the water fund has been trending in water purchases the last few years, I believe, again, it's on average, so I believe it's going to be somewhere between 55 to $60,000.
Per year?
Per year.
50, 50 to 60,000?
Yeah, if, you know, if you go back two years, it was closer to 60, then it kind of, it kind of wiggles around a little bit, so.
So the pass-through is about 50 to 60,000?
Correct.
Okay, I just want to understand that. Thank you.
Okay, so, I'm actually going to table this to budget unless there's some real critical reason why you need guidance now. And if you can answer that, then I'll recognize the mayor.
I mean, unless, unless manager Douthwait has a burning issue with it, you know, we wanted to bring it to your attention, particularly going into the budget season, so that, you know, nobody was blindsided, you know, come May 1st, you know, just looking at budgets and stuff, fire things way out of whack.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Douthwait, anything? Was that well put? Okay. Mr. Mayor?
I just wanted to warn the council, these, these rates are not fixed in stone yet. Talked to Jim Zay on Sunday, one of the county reps, and at this increase, they are not covering the cost of their system as of yet. He's anticipating that there will be further increases, very quickly.
Okay. Mr. Wilson?
Actually, I did mention that vote, I think it was five to four to go to the 21%. There were, the, the four, what I say that they weren't happy with that decision was would be an understatement. So I, you know, if you talked to Commissioner Zay, I know he was one of them, I don't want to say too many others, but, you know, I wouldn't be surprised if what, maybe they couldn't get a couple people to do a motion to reconsider it and go back at it, so, I don't know if that's, if that's where they're heading, pure speculation, but, yeah, it wouldn't, wouldn't put it past it.
I second the table.
Okay, I made the motion, or I am now, and I have a second. All in favor? Any opposed? It actually probably doesn't even need a table, it's a report, correct? But, I guess since we're doing.
It's a report.
Yeah, so it's just information only? Okay, is that okay, Mr. Wesley? Okay. So for information only, and that concludes that item. And also, items to be considered at future meetings, I may, business license ordinance amendment. Anything significant involved there? No? Does paperwork clean up, Mr. Douthwait? Business license ordinance amendment?
You all considered a change in the business license ordinance several months ago, and there was a request from several aldermen that we take a look at it with respect to how we deal with notification of hazardous materials in businesses, and we've been working on that with the finance director and the police chief, Alderman Lewitin, and we'll have what I would consider to be sort of a housekeeping cleanup of that, that we want to get to you in the next month or two.
So like, the business would have to notify the city that they're holding a hazard, work with a hazardous?
Right now, they do, and there was some concern about how that's defined, and how, what kind of, you know, hazardous materials they have to let us know about, and there was some confusion and, and some vagueness, and we were requested to go back and try and get a little more specific, and we've been working on that in cooperation with Alderman Lewitin, and we'll have something back in the next month or so to sort of clean that up. I wouldn't say that's substantive, it's more housekeeping than anything else.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Coles?
No, check with the EPA, because the EPA issues licenses and tags for hazardous material.
We already have, and we've been in touch with the fire department as well.
Okay.
Item B is budget 2010 through 2011.
Just to let you know on that.
Yeah.
The budget document will be delivered to you all tomorrow. We have scheduled two committee meetings next month to talk about that, on March 11th and March 25th. The first meeting on the, on the 11th will be an overview, Public Works Department and Police Department, and then all the other departments will follow in suit on March 25th. I'll give you all a little flyer or a little one-page memo tomorrow. It's a 200-page document, and it will look daunting when you get it, so I'll let you know which sections will be talking about which meetings, so you don't have to read it all at one time, and you'll have a chance to, to absorb that. And by all means, if you have any questions during the next month, please call us ahead of time, Brad and I can try and answer the questions you have before the meeting, I would hope, because when you see, there's not a whole lot in the budget that is different from this year. It's a status quo budget, and it shouldn't take a whole long time to go through. So I would hope that we can get the first meeting out of the way in an hour and a half or two hours, and the second meeting out of the way in an hour and a half. And that's my hope, and again, if you have any questions, please let us know.
Any other items for future meetings? I make a motion to adjourn, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries.
I'll call to order the planning, zoning and building committee meeting, February 25th, 2010. Will the minute taker please show all same members present, including Alderman Coles and Alderman Lewitin? I will make a motion to approve the minutes of the meeting dated February 11th, 2010, is there a second? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? None, motion carries. The next item is a report and recommendation, pay request number six. We're calling this a final, but there's still money holdback, so is it technically a final?
Well, that's, it's, it is their pay request number six, they are requesting that it be the final payout. As mentioned in the memo here, there are a few items that are still the responsibility, I believe, of the contractor to take care of and fix for us, which is why I'm recommending holding some money back from, so I would not consider this as a final payout, from our point of view.
I just wanted to basically correct the, the agenda, so it's clear to everybody who was paying attention. This payout request is for the amount of $94,874.2. As Mr. Forrest's very comprehensive breakdown shows, this leaves $13,000 out there, 5,000 of which, John, correct me if I'm wrong, is to ensure when the weather breaks that the landscaping was done to actual completion and appropriate in nature.
The landscaping and also the irrigation system that they put in for the landscaping.
Okay, great. And then the 8,000 for that, for that one item that is surrounded by a couple of question marks at this point. We can be more specific if anybody wants to be, but basically, this $8,000 does cover the cost of this item, should we need to pursue making any amendment to it on our own, meaning the city.
I believe it will, I did get the cost, their proposed estimate for doing this work that needs to be done, and it should probably be somewhere around 5,400 or 5,500. So we should have a little additional here, just in case that turns out not to be, so. As you can tell, I also am holding the last payout from the architect, so we do have a little additional monies available, should we need that, but I don't anticipate it.
And that, although that's not a part of this evening's discussion, just so everybody knows, is being held back for reasons of the same issue?
Correct.
Thank you. Anything else you want to add, Mr.?